Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Board of Selectmen for February 25, 2014. I'd like to call to order the meeting. The first item on the agenda is the approval of meeting minutes for February 11, 2014.
Move the approval of the minutes of February 11. I understand there were a couple of changes to them and I accept the changes.
Second.
Motion was made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Number three is the future meeting dates. I guess we're meeting on the 4th, the 11th, and 18th?
Yes. And while we're on it, Mr. Chair, the chairperson of the Master Plan Committee asked that I just publicize the fact that they are having a meeting, a citizen meeting at Fuller Village on March 1st, was it from 9:00 a.m. to noon time? And it should be a great event. I mean, it's a chance for all the citizens to get some input into what this master plan that, you know, we started probably almost a year ago now, some input into, you know, housing, open space, and, you know, transportation type of planning and what the future of the town, you know, might be over the next two or three decades. So, urge everybody to come. I understand there aren't going to be door prizes and there's going to be food. There are Red Sox tickets.
Any dancing?
I don't know about dancing, but I know there's food and door prizes.
What time does it start, Tom?
9:00 o'clock.
9:00 a.m., Fuller Village?
Correct.
At the Brush Hill Road address?
Yes, the big conference room they have there.
Right. This Saturday morning?
This Saturday morning.
Yep. And from 9:00 to 12:00, I believe?
Yes.
I'm not sure if you're going to be -- I'll be there at 11:00. I can't get there till 11:00.
Yeah, I'm still trying to rearrange my work schedule so I can see if I can get there.
And just so you know, right now I have a conflict for the 18th. I didn't realize we were on for the 18th. But I'll see what I can do. But for me personally, the 4th and the 11th are good right now.
The 25th, we didn't schedule because that's a follow-up to the master plan meeting. That's a public forum, so that's the following Tuesday.
Yeah. The 18th, I mean, I could do the 20th.
Well, let's hold off till the next, you know, the 4th and we can just see if I can rearrange something on the 18th.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. Number four is the approval of the payroll vendor warrants.
Move approval of the current payroll and vendor warrants.
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. And number five is citizen speak. Anyone here for citizen speak? Nobody here for citizen speak. Number six is actually going to be deferred, which was the Massport liaison, Chris Zambudo. He was going to come in and talk to us about the airplane noise. And that's going to be deferred to March 4th meeting. So we'll move on to number seven, which is the Norfolk County mosquito control budget. And we have Michael Blanchard, our assistant town administrator. Hi, Michael.
Hi, who are you?
Michael. Which hat are you wearing tonight?
Yes, you're correct. I'm wearing my former board health hat and trying to assist.
Can you first of all tell the public what exactly the mosquito control budget is all about?
Absolutely. Absolutely. So the town has been a member of the Norfolk County Mosquito Control Project since 2001. What the project does is provide mosquito control services to the town in a total of 25 towns in Norfolk County. In brief, that means things like water management. They do a lot of ditch maintenance. For example, last year they cleaned and maintained 3,500 feet of ditch within Milton, water ditches. They do larval control, which is the treating of wetlands and catch basins, so basically to catch the mosquitoes before they grow. Last year they treated 155 acres in Milton by helicopter and 2.4 acres by hand. And they also treated 724 catch basins within the town. They do adult control, which is the truck spraying, and that's based on residents' requests. They can call each week to be sprayed. Last year they treated 9,500 acres in Milton, and that was over 800 requests from residents during the summer, which was up significantly. It was up over, I believe, over 100% from the prior year, so it shows we obviously had a pretty active season last year. There were a lot of calls. And finally, they do monitoring. Each town has one trap that's set up each year, and they collect mosquitoes and send them to the state for testing. So they do that each year as well. The budget, as it's presented to you, how it's kind of formulated, it's initially reviewed by an independent commission that's appointed by the mosquito control board. Then it's actually approved by the mosquito control board themselves. The town really doesn't have any direct or control with the budget itself, but it's been a policy the last two or three years of the mosquito control board to ask towns to weigh in. They hold a public hearing, which I attended on your behalf when they present the budget, and then they ask the executive officers of the town to weigh in, either approve or not approve of the budget. Again, there's real no weight to that. They could, you know, completely ignore your support or not support, but they do ask for it as part of their process. The town's ability to be in the project or out of the project goes through town meeting. That's really the only way to withdraw or join the project itself.
How do they get the shares, you know, up the percentage of the budget for each of the towns? Is it by population or by area?
It's by -- they use a calculation that includes land area and also equalized valuation for the town, for the property taxes.
Okay.
So Milton's percentage breaks down to 4.5%.
We're going to be a little on the higher side because of our property value.
Exactly. Correct, correct. Which works out to be $72,978.
And where does this money come from?
This comes off the cherry sheet. So we actually never see this. It's not a budgeted item, you know, that's voted on, but it does come off the cherry sheet.
And is every town in Norfolk County a member of this?
No, I believe there's 28 towns in Norfolk County. If I'm not mistaken, 25 are members. I know for a fact Brookline, because of their geography, they're actually a member of the Middlesex Mosquito Control Project, and I can't speak to the other two towns. I'm not sure who are not members.
Thanks, Mike. We have a motion.
Move that we support the preliminary mosquito control for FY '15 proposed by the Norfolk County Mosquito Control District and Milton's estimated proportionate share and to authorize the town administrator to sign the declaration of support on behalf of the board.
I'll second the motion.
Motion was made in second. Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, Michael.
Thanks, Michael.
Next is the hazard mitigation plan. This is something we spoke about two weeks ago, and Selectmen Conlon needed, wanted extra time to read it, and that's fine. What are your thoughts, Katie?
Well, the issue was that we hadn't, you know, it was over 100 pages long and it only arrived that afternoon, so I did read it.
Good.
But both of you, having been on the board longer, had already probably been to a meeting that the board had with the local planning commission, so. So I'll move that we adopt and sign the hazard mitigation plan resolution update as submitted at the February 13, 2014 Board of Selectmen's meeting.
I'll second.
Motion made in second. Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Number 10 is the Randolph Ave Proposed 40B. I'd like to bring up Bill Clark, our director of planning. And 72 units, Bill?
72 units, all rental. As proposed, it would be 36 three bedrooms, nine two bedrooms, and 27 one bedrooms.
Three buildings?
Three buildings. It's an 8.14 acre site. 6.2 of that is buildable, 1.93 of wetlands. The density out there would be 8.8 units to the acre.
8.8?
Eight.
Units to the acre, okay. I know I asked this question before, but, and Katie, you had a question similar, but I understood that 40Bs, you have to have a like-kind project in a neighborhood. So for example, that's all single-family homes up there.
Yep.
Yet there's a proposal for rental units in apartment buildings. Isn't that unusual?
I believe that what they're basing their comments on are the two families that are across the street on Randolph Ave. They also have taken and changed the units so that the units are -- the original proposal was two rectangular buildings. The new buildings are supposed to look more like the larger houses that are up in the back. I mean, our issue is going to be to go back and address the typology issue, which is the similar-style houses. We'll be going back after the issue of the number of bedrooms and the rentals themselves.
Can you tell me again, Bill, how many three bedrooms?
36 three bedrooms, nine twos, and 27 one bedrooms. In the plan that was submitted to us, the affordables would be broken out, that there are seven one bedrooms, two twos, and nine threes. That's their initial thought to what would be affordable.
Now, standards say that the state will allow as few as 10%?
10% on the threes.
On the threes. But they require, they basically would require a minimum of 10%?
Yes.
So it would be seven, or eight, you know, whichever way you're around.
Eight compared to 36 is a huge difference. And I did make that comment at the site walk.
Yeah, in fact, the developer, well, I'm not sure if she was really speaking for the developer, but at least seemed to leave the door open for negotiations.
Discussions with them, yes. That's their housing specialist, and she did all the pro forma data showing that the project can work what is needed in that area and came up with the comps.
So we have a 30-day extension that's been granted to us. Is that right?
Just going to bring that up, yeah.
March 31st?
March 31st is the deadline for the comment period.
We've received that?
Yes, we have.
Is that the end of the 30-day period?
That's when the, that was the additional 30-day extension.
Additional 30 days, okay.
So your comment is due by March 31st.
So traffic is a big issue. Do we have the traffic commission looking at what they'd like to include in the response?
We have not, the traffic commission has not met to address this particular project. I do know that the senior department heads have talked about the issue. We have discussed that the project needs a traffic study. I mean, access in and out of this site is horrible. You're talking about trying to have X amount of people come out and try to turn left in the morning, or in the afternoon, trying to come out and have to cut across two lanes of traffic that is in a rush to get home in the afternoon. I know that the developer is doing a in-depth traffic study right now. I'm not sure when the traffic study is going to be done. I think if you've driven by the site, you've seen the tubes out there, so they're trying to get accurate counts.
And you can't put a light there, right?
No, it's too close.
Right.
I mean, without doing their homework for them, there's the possibility that we could put loops in the driveway that would connect up to Reed and Reed's Dale. That most likely is the only way that you're going to be able to get that much traffic in and out of that small road.
Bill, what can't we talk about when we write our letter to Mass Housing? Is it Mass Housing?
Mass Housing Partnership.
Mass Housing Partnership. I know we can't talk about schools, the impact on schools, right?
For as much as you can't talk about the impact on schools, I think you can talk about the impact that the lopsided number of three-bedroom units
Right.
is absolutely going to have an effect back on the school. So I mean, I think at that point you can take and make that kind of a comment. Is it going to have a whole lot of bearing? Probably not.
Because if you take 276 units up on Milton Muse on Brush Hill Road, 72 units here, that's about 345 units, and you take one person from each unit, we're going to need a new school.
Yep. Yeah, there's room for about, depending on how they're spread out, about 100 more students in the schools. That's what I've heard.
That's, not having taken and not having a better answer for the affordable housing number, not having the school is not something they want to hear.
Right. So I think the traffic issue was the big issue here, and we need--
Traffic is a huge public safety issue here.
Yes. So we need, when is the traffic commission planning to hold a meeting to talk about how they, no, the police chief might be already looking at this on his own, but is the traffic commission itself as a group planning to meet?
I think we need something to look at. It would be better if we had the traffic study. I'm guessing that they will not have a traffic study before our comments are due, so we'll be giving them the worst-case scenario. And I'll have to talk to the police chief about putting a traffic commission meeting together just to address this issue.
Well, we have a short window of time here, so we need to, for the Muse proposal, we didn't have a traffic study. I think that's one of the things we asked for, wasn't it, in the?
Yes.
So we probably won't get the traffic study report that's being done by the developer, but we should at least be putting in comments about what our concerns are about the traffic impact.
Yes.
So that really will need to come from the traffic commission.
Is there any kind of preliminary traffic study? We could, I guess, number one, how costly is one, even a cursory one, if the town would have paid for one? And--
I don't know, and I'll find out.
Okay.
And then, Bill, the other issue was the wetlands, but I think at the last meeting, you said the conservation commission has already been out to see the site a couple of times.
They've been out there several times. The determination of the line went through a superseding order with DEP. I believe there were four wetland, there were four attempts at a wetland line, and finally, there is a definitive line now.
And the plan by the developers to replicate the wetlands elsewhere on the site?
Yes.
Okay.
They're to replicate a portion because of the impact to the wetlands, because they're taking and putting a box culvert in, because of the impact that that box culvert will have. I know where it is. I don't know the square footage of it. And it's a fairly easy--
And the box culvert, you got to explain what the box culvert is?
Box culvert is what you will drive over. It's, the stream will be put into a rectangular pipe, and you'll be driving over the stream. It is intermittent stream, but at certain times it flows pretty good. At other times, you look at it and say, where is it? We know that it's there. We know that it carries water all the time. We know it's intermittent. We know that it, we have different pieces of drainage connected to it. So you do have to plan for bigger, not smaller.
So the question is, do we need anything further from the traffic commission, not the conservation commission, or do we need them to include any input on, in the response letter that we'll be writing?
We have a, we sent out a copy of the report back to the chairman. If he needs more copies, we'll give him more copies, but we haven't heard anything to date. That project will have to take and file with the conservation. For as much as they get to, they get to usurp our local zoning and they get to usurp the local wetland bylaw, they do not get to bypass the state wetland bylaws. So, or the state regulations. So it's up to the commission to enforce the regulations.
Okay. But I think the issue for us right now is 30 days will run out pretty quickly. You know, we're almost into March. Time's going to fly by. We've got a lot going on with budget and with a lot of other things. So department heads have already met to talk about--
Yes.
Who's putting together what pieces of this response? So I guess we want to just--
I'm like the blank person that accepts the comments. I have comments in right now from the police chief. I know that Joe Lynch and I met yesterday. He had a problem with his copy of the report. I know he's going through it now.
And what about the fire chief?
That's what I was going to bring up, because there's only one access egress.
We've, I've had a discussion with him over that, and it is one of, he can take and turn his truck in there. There is the potential that we may ask for a secondary fire exit, which would come into the side of the DPW. We're still reviewing that.
Now, in terms of us, and one of the things with the 40Bs, you're able to get the developer to pay for consultants and whatnot that the town may desire, but that's only after the issuance of, or that's only after the--
After they filed for a comprehensive permit.
Permit, yes, okay.
So what plan do we have in place? It sounds like you're gathering comments from department heads--
Yes.
--the conservation commission, if they wish to submit anything.
That does not preclude the commission, the conservation commission, the planning board, from submitting their own documents. They can submit letters themselves if they want. If they want to put it in with comments coming from the selectmen's office, they can do that, too.
So we just need to make sure that they know that, they know what the deadline is. And now on the Muse, the planning board did submit their own response, but if the conservation commission or anyone wants to submit a response, just so that they know they have an opportunity to submit them to you. Is John Flynn going to be the one writing this response letter as in the Muse proposal? Okay, so he has a copy of everything as well?
Similar to what happened last time. I give him an outline and he takes--
An email was sent to our department heads.
Question, Bill. Not that it necessarily is an alternative, but just so we at least have some kind of a point of view. Chapter 40R. Chapter 40R is the complement to 40B, which actually provides some money to the town should a--
Road zoning.
But, and there are a couple of things that are different about it. Number one, it's only a 20% affordable as opposed to a 25% affordable, so it's a little more enticing to developers in that sense. And you get money for schools and certain other things.
We get money for every unit. For every building permit that's pulled, we get X amount of money. So you get X per unit.
Whether they're affordable or not.
Yes.
Now, density requirements in a 40R? Are they more, is there a requirement to be very dense in a 40R?
No. No. These would fit, going back to--
With something less than that fit, I guess, is the question.
Something could be less. But eight, eight units, what is it, 8.8 to the acre? That, I'm fine with that. You were talking about 40S, which is the part that deals with schools.
Yeah.
40S will give you, the state will give you the monies that you spend on schools over and above what you would have spent anyways for that child. If that development is causing you to, causing your budget to go out of whack, they will make up the difference for that kid for what you're, what you normally spent. You need a bus because all the buses are full. They cover that kind of cost, but they're not going to pay for--
Friendly 40B?
--school.
It is more or less, in order to get one, you actually have to change your zoning to accept--
You have to, you have to write into your local zoning that you have a smart growth district. And your smart growth district has to be approved by town meeting.
It can be just that one lot of land. It doesn't have to be a full area. But you would have to tweak the zoning. It's almost like an overlay type of zoning to be a smart--
Yes. Seems like it's too late for that now, right?
I don't think it's necessarily too late for it, but--
Well, they're moving ahead with their application.
Well, regardless of whether they do or don't, it still might be something that's enticing, but it's got to be enticing to the town, too. In other words, the only thing that would make it enticing would be less density, you know, less than 72 units, you know, less three bedrooms. But, you know, they've also got, they can make a little more money on it because they're 5% less affordable.
Let's go back to the mitigation point, that if this is a 40B, what do we need to be addressed--
Absolutely, yes.
--for this project?
Yeah.
I mean, that's one that--
That's a discussion--
All of our, right, all of our department heads have already been, you know, warned and asked for, what is it that we need for this project? If we need something, you know, what is it? If you have a wish list, give me the wish list so that we can start talking about negotiating for the project, with the project.
At the last meeting, we asked if anyone from the public wanted to include any comments, to notify Bill, Anne Marie, or any of us. I have not heard from anyone. I don't know if anyone else has from--
I know the Neighborhood Association has hired an attorney, or if they haven't hired her, about, is about an attorney. Just got to investigate it, but beyond that, I don't know of anything.
So if anyone's watching and they want to submit comments, they can submit them to any of us, or Anne Marie, or Bill, or they can call the selectmen's office with comments, and we'll get the call to the right place.
So what's the plan of action, Bill, before you leave?
I'm going to get, take the comments from our department heads, from other staff to me. I'll put them together, put them into an outline.
Send it to John.
Get with John, and we'll come up with a draft for this board. I'll also, you know, try to get the traffic commission to take and make comment back to the traffic issues.
And this has to be done by the end of March?
Yes.
Yeah. And see if we can get some kind of, even a cursory traffic study that we can include with it.
So how quickly can we get your outline, Bill? By the, say, the 15th? We have meetings on the 4th and the 11th. We set one schedule for the 18th that might need to change, but we are going to need to look at it and, you know, weigh in on it. So I'd like to see the draft at the same time. It goes to John, probably. Everyone else would, too.
Do you want an initial draft on your March 11th agenda?
Not a chance.
That's three weeks away.
Yeah, but to give it to you on the 11th, it means I have to give it to you on the 7th, and there's not a chance you're going to get it between now and then. I can't do it, never mind.
Well, if you can email to us by the 15th, at least just, everyone can at least start reading the draft.
Right. I mean, trying to get it to you for, to make your packet deadlines, I'm having problems getting your deadlines now, adding something like this in. I'm sorry, it's not happening.
All right. Well, let's see how it goes, but what, if you could try to get it to us by the 15th?
I will try.
And we, basically, two weeks after that for--
Yep.
--for us to look at it, for John to look at it, and for anyone else who hasn't yet submitted comments at that point to get them in.
Okay, Bill, thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Good job, as usual.
Thank you.
Just for a moment, we're going to skip over number 11, the pilot committee, and bring up Joan Clifford for the Milton Art Center Art in the Windows. Hi, Joan.
Hi, Joan.
How are you?
How's everybody?
Very good, thank you.
Good.
So I see you're looking to put children's art in windows around town?
Well, it's a little bit, if we're using the same title as last year, but we want to make it, we want to ask the town of Milton for permission to use some outdoor sites across town. So Art in the Windows is a community art project for children, and last year we held it in March. This year, we want to hold it in May. And we would like to ask the town for permission to use in front of Town Hall near the gazebo. The teens, we have one teen group that has expressed interest in that space. The East Milton Deck, Turner's Pond in the town park at the WAF, where the farmers market locations are. And we have 11 children right now, from kindergarteners to one teen group, about 130 children who are working on art projects over the next two months. The projects will be fairly simple. There, a lot of the groups are kindergarten and first grade. There's some examples. They haven't, they haven't locked in on their actual project idea, but these are some of the visuals that they're being shown, that they may work off of, like, a pinwheel installation. Fairly, fairly simple. The theme is the planet Earth. Some of, the group that would like to use Turner's Pond would like to work off of Earth Day, pick up trash, and, you know, I'm not exactly sure what, I don't think they're going to hang the trash, but they are still working off of that idea right now. Other, another group is interested in endangered animals, drawing them large scale. Another group is, and the teens are interested in diversity-- Another group is, and the teens are interested in diversity.
Right. That's a wonderful idea. My only question would be, just from the outdoor sites, because they would be exposed to the elements.
Yes.
How would you secure them to make sure they don't blow around in the wind?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, definitely, the, if they decided to hang something from a branch, it would be secured by pipe cleaners. Those have been pretty secure. If they were installed, like, say, pinwheels into the grounds, we would make every effort to make it secure.
Okay. That would be my only concern. Otherwise, I think it's a wonderful idea, but I certainly wouldn't want to see them blown all over the streets and-
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Actually, that was going to be my question, how, how are they going to be displayed?
Well, yeah.
Hanging from trees?
Well, it, there's, it's still being worked out. This is a project that just started this past Sunday. The group leaders all met, and in the next two months, they'll be working on their individual projects. I could show you an update as we get closer.
That would be great.
Yeah.
And maybe give approval to this, but ask to see again that, because they are outdoor sites, to make sure that there is a plan to-
Absolutely.
Make sure that they are secure, so they don't blow.
I think, Joan, you might want to contact the Park Commissioners as well for Turner's Pond.
I was just about to ask that, whether we needed to get them involved.
Okay.
Okay.
Can you do that?
Turner's Pond is under the Park Commissioners jurisdiction.
I didn't know that, yeah.
We'll need to have their approval.
Okay. So is the wharf, right?
Some of the wharf is, some of it is, yeah. So it depends where you are, yeah.
The farmers' market is your location.
But anything to support the Art Center and especially our children that make these drawings and artist renditions, where I'm fully in support of anyway.
Okay, thank you.
I guess we can change this motion a little bit to approve a request of Milton Art Center to display children's art projects during the month of May near the gazebo, Turner's Pond, and East Milton Square Deck, subject to approval by the Park Department for areas that they control.
They also want, it's not in the motion, but the town park at the wharf. So I'll offer that as a, if you'll accept that as a friendly amendment, we'll add that in.
Yep, that's fine.
And you said subject to the approval of the Park Commissioners for the Turner's Pond.
For any parcels they may control.
Yeah, okay, second.
The motion was made in second. Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Is unanimous? Thank you, Joan.
Thank you very much. I'll send an update in three or four weeks.
That's great.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll go back to the, to number 11, the Pilot Committee charge, and we have a motion of somebody, I don't know if you want to read the whole thing or just?
It's up to you. I mean, I don't mind going either way.
Well, this is to do with the Pilot Committee that we're going to create and the charge that the Pilot Committee will have. I think it-
I think we probably should.
We probably should read it so that the public knows-
I don't mind reading it.
Go ahead, Tommy, you're a good reader.
So I'll propose a motion to establish a Pilot Committee and charge it with the following responsibilities. The Pilot Committee shall develop a payment-in-lie tax policy with the goal of encouraging tax-exempt institutions to make voluntary payments to help offset the cost of providing town services to those institutions. While monetary payments in lieu of taxes aren't preferable, the Board recognizes that in some cases, in-kind contributions and/or community partnerships may be acceptable. The Pilot Committee shall develop a methodology for valuing any such proposed in-kind contributions or community partnership. The Pilot Committee shall determine a standard level of contribution in, payment in-kind contribution or community partnership to be made by all major tax-exempt institutions in Milton. The policy to be formulated by the Pilot Committee shall be applied consistently to all major tax-exempt institutions. The town shall not discriminate in making requests for pilot payments, in-kind contributions, or community partnerships to major tax-exempt institutions. The Pilot Committee shall certify, clarify the costs associated with providing town services to an individual major tax-exempt institution. The Pilot Committee shall, if necessary, provide recommendations on legislative changes at the town or state level. The Pilot Committee shall work with the Board and the town's state legislative delegation to achieve more equitable treatment of Milton concerning state-owned land, particularly land owned by the Department of Conservation and Recreation, DCR. The Pilot Committee shall work with the Board of Assessors and the town's state legislative delegation to properly value DCR-owned land situated in the town, including the state DPW yard located at Granite Avenue. The Pilot Committee shall work with the Board of Assessors to collect and maintain information about the tax-exempt properties in the town and to properly classify pilot payments for state reporting. The Pilot Committee shall notify when an owner of a current taxable property applies to the Board of Assessors for an exemption from the property taxation, or when the, when an existing tax-exempt institution applies to the Building Commissioner to expand or improve its property. In such cases, the Pilot Committee shall recommend a course of action to the Board for the purpose of securing an equitable agreement with the applicant concerning a pilot payment or other contribution to be made to the town. The Pilot Committee shall submit an annual written report concerning its activities with respect to tax-exempt properties to the Board. This, this report, along with the results of any pilot agreements that the Board and/or the town administrator on its behalf negotiates with a tax-exempt institution during the year, shall be published in the annual report.
I'll second it for discussion. A couple of things that I talked with Anne Marie about that I just wanted to run by the committee. So the, the goal is to have this Pilot Committee come up with a policy for collecting either pilot payments or some kind of in-kind contributions.
Correct.
So I think some of the early sentences, you know, turn, talk about our preferences for voluntary payments and that, I agree with that. That would be my preference as well. Determining a standard level of contribution, we talk about major tax-exempt institutions rather than all tax-exempt institutions, which is, again, probably what we're really looking at, but one of the questions I raised was, if we want the committee to come up with the policy, shouldn't some of that be something that they should be thinking about and advising us what they think the right policy might be? You know, it may be that we don't want to seek in-kind contributions. We'd prefer to just ask for pilot payments rather than in-kind contributions or community partnerships. And I guess it could all depend on how we define major tax-exempt institutions. We probably know what some of them are, but there may be others that we might want to approach for pilot that might not be considered major, so I think-
Does that charge mean that, or does it mean that you, that the, the policy won't discriminate towards major? In other words, it will be even handed towards all-
Making the requests. Yeah, it says the town shall not discriminate in making requests.
So I, I read that, that we're not just trying to secure pilot payments from just the large tax-exempt institutions.
Everybody.
Everybody, but, but it should be fair.
It does, although we say we shall not discriminate in making requests to major tax-exempt institutions, so it really depends on how you define major. I tried playing with this to try to make it very short and just charge the committee with recommending a policy, and then the question that the town administrator and I talked about was, well, some of these other things, we probably want the Pilot Committee to have some involvement with the Board of Assessors, but I think the most important thing right now is for the committee to recommend a policy, and then it would probably be the town administrator that's negotiating with any institutions. The second piece of it that we should talk about is, we have some people, I think nine members, is it, Anne Marie?
Yes.
People who have either volunteered or we've asked to serve, I think it was Jim Henderson who suggested that we have representatives of at least three of the major tax-exempt institutions be involved so that they would buy into the process. I, I would be surprised if they'd want to stay on for some of this other things like working with the Board of Assessors to make sure that state-owned land located in Milton is properly classified. So it may be that they're involved initially in terms of setting a policy. That's probably what we really want them for. Maybe they'd have an interest in staying on and considering some of these other issues. Maybe they wouldn't. I guess we could consider that at a later date, but it seemed to me that we were almost kind of dictating a little bit about what the policy would be rather than having the committee tell us after they have a collective discussion about it, what they might like it to be.
Could we try this? The most successful Pilot Committee to date has been the one the city of Boston established. Is there any possibility we could get somebody from that committee to address us as to how they were established and what their charge really was, and at least listen to that and then kind of make up our, our minds?
I can bring somebody in if you'd like.
We could, although that would delay it, get this group getting started, and we've already had a little bit of a delay. And I know, I think the town administrator's done a lot of research in coming up with this charge.
Well, how about we let the committee meet, discuss it, and then come back to the Board with maybe some revisions on this?
Yeah, I, I think we could take that approach. We might tell them that this is the charge, we, maybe the charge could be subject to being revised at some point if they come in with a policy that's, might be slightly different than what some of this is. Because it is, it is important to try to get the policy, and I think we could do that fairly quickly. We've, some of the other towns that have similar pilot pay, policies can be used as guidance, and it's not really that complicated. I think it's probably two or three meetings and-
It's not complicated. It, because it's a voluntary program, it's difficult to get buy-in. It's really difficult to get buy-in from, because they know that they can just stonewall and-
But that's the whole point of having the representatives from the institutions-
That's right.
-on the committee, and that, so I don't think we'd want to burden them with a lot of other things. I think if, I think they probably would, would want to be on the committee to help set what the policy would be, and then it makes it easier to go out to them with an ask if we, if they've had some buy-in with the, with the policy.
I hear what you're saying.
And they've told you, Anne Marie, that they want to see the charge before they'll agree to appoint anybody?
The nonprofits would like to see the charge before they appoint somebody so that they can appoint the right person to the committee once they see what your, your charge is. And there's also, one of the potential members that you will be appointing to this committee was a former member of the Town Government Study Committee and did do a lot of work on that committee-
That's right.
...in respect to the pilot programs. So I think-
He did a lot of research on the Boston policy.
Okay, that's good.
So the idea is if we could get this committee up and running quickly, and I think your plan is to submit the names next week?
Yes.
At the next meeting?
If, if this charge is approved this evening, I wanted to get it out tomorrow to the institutions and get their names. I have the other five names, so, six of us.
My only point, and I was concerned initially that we weren't establishing a standing committee that just would have, even though it's only a one-year appointment, you know, I wouldn't want to see something that's going to last for the next 10 years.
Right, and this, that, I mean, some of this charge talks about annual reporting, the committee being notified when the assessors get a request for some property to come off the tax rolls or tax-exempt property to be expanded, so it sort of contemplates an ongoing standing committee.
Yeah, and I didn't contemplate a standing committee. I contemplated a committee that was going to help us come up with a policy and, you know, and-
And get them to, get them to agree.
-get buy-in from the nonprofit community and, and then kind of set us in motion, you know, whoever, whoever us is, but somebody has to be in charge of making sure that the plan and the policy is implemented and goes forward from year after year after year.
Which I probably contemplated would be the town administrator really handling that. But if we can get a policy in place fairly quickly within the next couple of months, and if the institutions have had a role in making the policy, presumably it's an easier task to try to negotiate an agreement with them, which, depending on how quickly it's done, it's only, it's still the end of February. If we can get an agreement in place, there's even the potential to revisit some of our local revenue pilot numbers that we're looking at and working with the Warrant Committee on for this year. That might be ambitious, but I think it's possible.
So that being said, where do we go from here? Do we, do we move this thing, or do we just?
I say we move it and let the committee get appointed, meet, and then come back.
I think, yeah, or how about if we, along those lines, Dennis, if we, if we vote it tonight, we could submit it to the nonprofits, see if they come back saying, oh, you know, that's a little too onerous, we don't really want to be involved, or if they say, great, we'll, we'll serve on it. We might not want to be involved at some of the later stages, but, but if they're willing to serve on it with all this detail, and we could make it clear to the committee that if they want to recommend something that's a little bit different than what's in here.
We're amenable to-
Yeah, because I think the first sentence is the most important part, shall develop a policy. And it's possible that they may come back just recommending solely monetary payments, not partnerships.
Right.
Okay.
So the motion was made in seconded. Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Is unanimous?
So, Anne Marie, do you have time tomorrow to submit this to the nonprofits?
Yes, yes.
And number 13 is a one-day liquor license for St. Mary of the Hills PTO.
I'll move that we approve a request by St. Mary of the Hills PTO for a one-day liquor license for an auction fundraiser that will be held on Saturday, April 5th, 2014, at 250 Brook Road.
I'll second.
Motion was made in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number 15 is the FY 15 budget discussion.
Number 14 we missed. Eagle Scout recognition.
Oh, I'm sorry. The Eagle Scout recognition, yeah. We have a motion.
I move to approve and sign letters of recognition to the following Eagle Scout recipients. Peter R. Eberhart, Matthew H. Morris, and Blair M. Bowden.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
That's quite an honor to come and Eagle Scout, so congratulations to all three.
That's a lot of hard work.
Number 15 is the 2015 budget discussion, which we're in the midst of right now, and a lot of late nights.
Yes.
And Tom, you're going to make a presentation?
Uh, yeah.
On one thing?
On just one thing, yes. And I'm sure at this point, most everybody has heard about the, the debt service problem that we have. So I, and last night before the Warrant Committee, I went through, because I am a member of the Capital Planning Committee, I am the person that developed the capital, the capital plan that we use, you know, it's the mechanical capital plan, a spreadsheet, that determines where we want to have, what we want to have as a level of debt service and how we get there. So I just wanted to first go through how that spreadsheet is designed and developed and what the inputs are that go into it and, and what the output looks like. So that being said, if you look at the monitor, you can see, here's our inputs and our assumptions, starting from the top. It's tough to be blind, but, so this is the 2000, this is the year 2014 one we're looking at right now. So where we start is, we want to determine, and we decided this, that it is a good idea to try and maintain a debt service that, a debt service payment that is in relationship to some sort of your revenue, and, and that that debt service payment would grow in proportion to your revenue growth. What the, what I originally, when I originally designed it, it was a percentage of total revenue. The Warrant Committee requested that we do it based upon the tax levy as opposed to total revenue. So the ratio you're looking at there is the desired level of debt service as a percentage of the tax levy. So that is 1.9%. So we are committing 1.9% of our tax levy revenue each year to the payment of debt service for capital projects. It's not a large number, but, but it's-
When, when a lot of towns are at about 5%?
Yeah, a lot of towns are at 5%. But the 1.9% was picked because that's approximately the level of debt service we had in 2012 when this whole thing started. So then, the next thing we do is we input an estimated tax levy for 2014, and then we, again, working with the Board of Assessors, try and determine what new growth might look like, and that $350,000 for that year was just based upon what the estimate was for that year and just kind of roll forward with it. Then we determine a revenue growth rate. Since we're using the tax levy and it's Proposition 2.5, we're using a growth rate of 2.5% each year on the revenue base. And then we have to determine, well, what are we going to sell these bonds at? Because anything that we put on for a capital project is predicated upon selling bonds that is going to have a debt service payment principal and interest. So we've got to make some assumption as to not only the, the length of the bond, but So we've got to make some assumption as to not only the length of the bond, but what the interest rate is on the bond. So again, we use 2.5% based upon conversations with bond consultant and, and kind of went from there. Now, before we actually bond projects, we issue temporary debt on those projects. So the model does build in an assumption to issue some temporary debt. And what is the interest rate on that temporary debt? We're using 1.5%, which is, is higher than we've typically been recently. We're at a percent or a little bit less than a percent. So it's a conservative number in terms of planning.
Where does that money come from? The temporary debt?
That same place. That comes from the tax levy. I mean, it comes from, you know, it's, it's part of the debt service payment. Then the bottom part is we just input our actual debt service payments as we know them to exist when the spreadsheet was built. So at the beginning of FY 14, this is what we know our debt service is actually going to be for fiscal year 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19. So, and then we have capital leases that we know exist, and we know we actually have ban, you know, short-term interest for 2014. But there would not be, nothing scheduled beyond that that is on the books at this point. So from there, we get our departmental capital needs. That's the next sheet. And this is, all the departments basically give us a list of their wishes for capital projects, and they try and prioritize how important are those capital projects. So we load that into the spreadsheet, all the various capital projects, and we have many, many meetings determining which ones we think are most necessary. And then from the most necessary, which ones can we fit in the model and, and make it work? So if you go to the right, oop, stay on capital needs, and go to the right a little bit on that spreadsheet, and go up so you can see the titles. So, you know, you've got the, the priority, the year requested, the year bonded. So this spreadsheet was built based upon bonding would be in the year after the equipment was requested. We determine a bonding life based upon the statutory laws a lot about the state. And then we recommend yes or no on these things. And that's basically, from there, if we recommend yes, it flows to a bond and a ban schedule. So if you see that next column, yep, no, the one, one more to the right, yeah, on the, on the spreadsheets. See future ban? That one, yep. So this is a spreadsheet that just takes everything from the capital needs we said yes to, loads it in, and the assumption is we're going to ban it, we're going to pay ban interest in, in the year that the project is approved, and for the next year, and then it falls off because it gets bonded after that. And there's the 1.5%. And then if you can go one more spreadsheet to the right, if you just click on, yeah, there you go, then it goes into the bonding spreadsheet. And that gets, you know, the, the assumption is, these are all projects, you know, things that we are recommending, and what will the principal and interest on bonds look like? Again, the request in 14, bonding in 15. If the request was in 15, then the bonding would be in 16, so on and so forth. And that all flows forward. Now, if you go to the, to the left, the level of debt service sheet. So now, all this stuff is coming into this level of debt service sheet. So you can see the 1.9%. You can see the projected revenue, the new growth, the desired level of debt service, that million-two is 1.9% of that revenue number. Then you can see, okay, we have, you know, capital leases, we have current debt service in bonds, and we have ban payments for $993,000. So we have capacity in FY 14 for an additional $229,000 to stay within the, the 1.9%. So then the, the goal is to load up your, your sheet with the, with the projects that we, you know, we, we think are the most critical, and try and get something that fits so that you stay within those levels. So we did that. And lo and behold, when we did it in FY 14, we didn't contemplate, and, and part of this is, prior to this, we never had a capital committee that really did planning in terms of trying to, you know, project out what things would look like and, and really have an idea of if we put something on, what's the impact? It was more of a seat-of-the-pants approach. And there were many years when I was on the warrant committee that the capital committee never met. They just said, there's no money, we're not going to meet, and just never recommended capital projects. So this was an attempt to, let's bring it, you know, into the 21st century a little bit and do some planning. The problem is, it was a disconnect between the plan and what actually happened. And there were three disconnects. One was, the plan had assumed that you would recommend in one year, authorize in, you know, in that year, and then bond in the next year. Well, in actuality, we bond every other year. And when we bonded in 14, this bond issue we just issued, just did, we bonded 2013 and 2014 projects. So our planning said, it gets bonded in 15, the first debt service payment isn't until 16. So they bonded it in 14, $3 million worth of projects, first debt service payment comes due in 15. So now that's why the 15 is so loaded up with, with debt. In addition to that, we had a very short-term piece of equipment, the telephone system, which we contemplated would be bonded over five years. It wound up getting bonded over three years because it was banned for two years. We could have increased the useful life from five to seven and still bonded it, but no, again, it was just no recognition that there was a plan and we should try and make sure that the, what actually happens, you know, agrees with the plan. And then the third thing is the, the bonds, even though the total impact of the bonds was like 2.1 and a half, 2.14 or 5% in terms of interest rate, the early years carry an interest rate of about 5%. So it pushes up those debt service payments in those early years, and they tail off as you, as you go out. So that's what happened. That's how we wound up with about $300,000 more than the 1.9% number that we were shooting for, for, for FY 15. Now fortunately, we do have a $300,000 bond premium. So, and all it is, is we put the bonds out to bid, and you accept the highest bidder for the bonds. So the bonds had, if you have a premium, the bonds, say, have a face value of $1,000, somebody bids $1,010 for them, you know. But whatever it was, we wound up with an extra approximately $380,000 in premium after paying for issuance costs with that premium and a few other things, we were left with about $302,000. We can utilize that $302,000 either in FY 15 and 16 to reduce debt service payments or 16 and 17, depending upon how we do it. And the reason for that is, we can, if, if we decide we want to, if we do nothing, that $300,000 of premium becomes a free cash number. It's revenue in 14 that has not been used. It flows to free cash and gets certified in November of 15, becomes available in essence for fiscal 16 and 17. It's just free cash, can be used for anything. The other alternative is, we could have a special town meeting within the annual town meeting this year. So we'd have an FY 14 special town meeting. Appropriate the $302,000 into the capital reserve. Once it's appropriated into the capital reserve, then in the annual town meeting, we can then pull out the interest costs, $176,000 related to this issue, and use it as available funds in FY 15. And then the balance of it, we could pull out and use in FY 16.
Will that cover the 16 interest payment?
Pretty close. Pretty close.
The 16 interest payment would be 152,988, and the balance that would be left in the cap stabilization.
About 120.
So 126,000.
Yeah, so it's pretty close. It's pretty close. So, so one of the decisions we have to make, I think as a board, whether we make it tonight or, and probably should make it tonight, but going to make it, would be, are we going to open and close a warrant for a special town meeting before the May annual town meeting? So it would be, at the same time, it would be, we'd have to print a one-page warrant that would go out to the households, would be read first at town meeting with just one article in it. And if approved, then there would already be an article in the 15 annual to pull 176,000 out.
Tom, let me ask you, just, there was a lot to keep up with, obviously. The bonds were supposed to be issued in 15, the first payment in 16?
Mm-hmm.
But they were issued in 14?
14.
So the first payment is in 15?
Right.
So does that mean there is no bonds going to be issued in 16 now?
If, if we keep with the actual policy we've been using, there would be no bond issued in 15, there would be bonds issued in 16, right? They're basically in even years, if you do it every other year.
Provided the capital committee makes recommendations in town meeting approves that.
Well, since we had bonds issued two years in a row now, right?
It wouldn't be in 15 because it wouldn't, even if we had some capital projects, the cost to issue bonds is, you need to have a substantial...
Right.
...amount of debt that you're issuing to make it worthwhile. So the focus would be 16, provided there were projects that needed to be bonded.
And can I ask, where was the disconnect on?
The disconnect was, you have a plan, the, the spreadsheet and, and what the capital committee voted...
Because, not to cut you off, but it wasn't like it was 600,000, it was 3 million, right, of a bond?
Three, yeah, $3 million of projects in FY 14 that we approved. The largest one being Central Ave.
If somebody issued the bonds, so where was the disconnect? Who issued the bonds?
Well, the, the bonds would have been issued by, well, the town issues the bonds, but it's, you know, it's a treasury function, and the bond consultant and bond counsel all, you know, get together and, and do the issuance, you know, the sale of the bonds. The selectmen approve and sign them.
Right, but the, the company that issues the bonds, they're aware that we issue bonds every other year, right?
I, I suspect, yes. I don't know if that's a cast-in-stone policy, but it probably tends to be every other year you wind up getting enough...
Yeah.
...capital projects to make it worthwhile.
They were, all right, so every other year, yet they were presented with bonds to be issued two years in a row. Did they not raise any, was that any...
No, they, no, they didn't. There was, there was no bond issue in 13, but the, the capital projects authorized in 13 and 14 were bonded in 14. So there was no 13 issuance. There was a 12 issuance and a 14 issuance.
Every other year.
So that's where the, that's where the disconnect came in. That, we had a plan that said one thing, the people that were implementing the actual didn't use the plan for whatever reason, and just business as usual, we've got enough, we're going to bond it, let's do it, we did it, and that's what happened.
Right.
So lesson learned is, you know, if we're going to do planning, we've got to make sure that the people in charge of the implementation realize and understand that there's a plan that, you know, and vice versa, you know, the people doing the planning have to make sure that the plan mirrors reality. So that's kind of where it's at.
If the bonds were issued a year later, would the interest rate have been lower?
I don't think the interest would, would have necessarily been lower, but it would have, again, bought you that much more time, you know, that we would have had, we would have had room, we would have accumulated surplus in 14 and 15 that we could have used in the, in the outer years to...
So the bottom line is, we, for one year, we have to pay the interest that we didn't plan for?
Yes, and we have...
Next year, we would have had to pay it anyway.
Right. And, and again, we're about $320,000 over the 1.9%. We're getting $176,000 of bond premium. So you're about really a hun, you're about $180,000 or whatever that, the difference in the math is.
Right.
You're, you're less than $200,000 over the 1.9%. Hopefully that explains it.
It does, but I get it, yeah. But now we have to...
We should just explain why this is an issue, because it's come up at the warrant committee meetings, because it's now hitting the budget that they're trying to put together for, to recommend a town meeting for next year.
Right.
It's having an impact on, initially, it came up in the context of the free cash and how they were going to distribute one-time monies.
Right. Yeah, we, we do have two point, well, a little over $2 million of free cash and about $400,000 in, in release of overlay reserves that are typically considered one-time money. You try not to use them in operating budgets because it's, it's hard to sustain $2.4 million of free cash year after year after year.
That's right, but there is a portion of it that's being put into the operating budget.
There is.
Because the consensus of a group of people working on it was that it, it could be justified as operating expenses through additional excise tax or other things that might have been underestimated last year.
And even if not, it, the pain of not funding...
Yes.
...some of those was, was too great.
So we have a decision now whether we want to have a special town meeting within the town meeting?
Yes. If we, if we do, then we're going to increase revenue availability for 2015 by $176,000.
Right.
If we don't, we're not going to necessarily lose that revenue, we're just going to push that revenue off into fiscal year 16. So that, that's the choice. Do we, do we want to create additional revenue in 15 so that we can mitigate the 15 problem? Because who knows what we're going to do in 16?
Right.
Are we, are we at critical mass at this point where we can't go any further and we need an override? I mean, that's a discussion that certainly has to be had.
We're pretty close.
But, and, and if there is, then, you know, having the revenue in, in 15 may be more preferable, just to, you know, just to get through 15, you know, with the least amount of pain.
So having the special town meeting and appropriating many to the capital stabilization fund and then having a separate article taking it out was viewed by, we've, there's been a few different meetings that have been going on at different times and different people, and we were all at the warrant committee meeting last night. That was one option. The other option was to take it from money that would have been appropriate for stabilization. And Amber, have you had any further discussions? There was concern among some people that you needed two-thirds vote to transfer money into stabilization fund, you know, to transfer it out. And that that might, there may be some reluctance among some town meeting members to want to do that. Obviously, it would have to be fully explained, and there'd have to be a lot of buy-in by a lot of different boards and committees that, we're doing this for a reason, here's the plan.
Oh, it is a pretty easy concept to understand. It's not, it's not tremendously difficult. We have 300,000, we're going to put it in, we're going to pull it back all over two years.
And we talked about doing a presentation at the beginning of town meeting to explain that, so that town meeting members would understand what we were exactly doing.
So have you had any further discussions with the working group, which included, you know, Amy Dexter and Glenn Pavlicek, about one versus the other approach?
No, we haven't. There's pros and cons to both sides. I mean, if you stay and, and take the one-time free cash this year, then obviously you, you deplete 176,000 of one-time monies to departments for one-time requests. If you do the special town meeting and appropriate the 302 into the fiscal 14 cap stabilization, you free up the 176 for one-time items. But you do run the risk that in the annual town meeting, you need, like Tom said, you need a two-thirds vote to then take that money out of cap stabilization.
Well, that's the worst case scenario.
And if you don't get that money, then you're scrambling on town meeting floor to have to reduce that one-time article, one-time money article.
So, so the warrant committee would have to be prepared to, to make that recommendation that didn't pass. But, but again, it's a pretty easy concept to understand. This is money that is there to, to level out the effective interest rate of that bond issue, and that's what it's meant to be used for, and that's what we want to use it for. That's why it's going into the capital stabilization fund, and that's why it's going to come out of the capital stabilization fund. So it's, it's fairly, fairly easy to understand. The fear of, the downside of letting it go to free cash is twofold. Number one, it's, if it goes to free cash, it's unrestricted free cash. It is not tied any longer to debt service.
To the debt service.
It could be used for anything you want. So the, the fear would be that it would never get back to debt service if it went to free cash. Secondly, that there is never a guarantee... Secondly, that there is never a guarantee you're going to have free cash, even though you have this 300,000, you know, if, you know, there are some worst-case scenarios, you could potentially wind up with no free cash that year, and the 300,000 just gets gobbled up in, in, in a deficit in es, in essence, and becomes not available at all.
Yeah, I guess on the first point, you could, there could be a comment or an explanation in the warrant, that's what's been done in the past, to put an explanation in the warrant so that it's, it's made known to everybody, it's emphasized at town meeting, and then the next year, we, you know, we reference that. That is one approach that you could take. We have a budget discussion on our agenda, we don't have any opening, a special town meeting warrant.
We don't.
Do we, are we, can we take that action at this meeting?
I think you'd have to wait and make it at your next meeting to open and close a warrant, but you'd have to do it opening
We still have time to do that.
But, but your question that, that special town meeting warrant has to be in the homes 14 days before
Right.
the election, so
The meeting is a 14th meeting.
The meeting.
Right.
Say that again?
The, it's different than the annual town warrant. The annual town warrant has to be in the homes four days before
Oh, I see.
and posted at the post office seven days before. The special town meeting would have to be 14 days before.
But again, that's only, you know, as long as we take action at our next meeting, you're only talking a one-page warrant.
One-page warrant.
You could get it out pretty quick.
But you need two articles, right?
No, just one.
No, just the one article.
Just one.
And then the only other downside is it will cost you about approximately $2,500 to
Postage and printing.
For postage and printing of a warrant, a special town meeting warrant, which we would just have to get an RFT for because it's not in our budget.
Right.
But the special town meeting will put the money into?
15.
Which fund?
It puts it into the capital stabilization fund in 14 to make it available for 15.
Don't you need an article to take it back out again?
Yes.
Yes.
That's two articles.
But that's in 15, that, that's in the annual town meeting.
You have that boilerplate.
So that would be in the, the 100-page document as opposed to the one-page document.
It's a boilerplate.
But we're creating two, just in two different, in two different meetings.
Yes, right.
All right, I get it.
So we'll put that on your agenda for next week?
Yeah.
Can, can we have a consensus to tell the warrant committee that we have a consensus, I guess?
There's definitely pros and cons to both. You are looking at additional printing costs.
Yeah, you're looking at a 2,500 extra bucks.
Yeah.
Is it worth paying 2,500 bucks to have an extra 176 available for 15?
Well, you, yeah, but you could have it available if you did it through the pri, the process that, that you and Glenn and Amy and I talked about as well.
Well, the free, the free cash pro
The free, taking it from free, taking it from the money that would, that the warrant committee, I think, was earmarking for stabilization, and then letting the bond premium this year flow into free cash next year to replenish it.
You know, I think, I think they're going to take the money from stabilization anyways and not
Stabilization, plus still, you would need the 176.
Right, so, so this basically puts 176
Out of commission.
back for one-time
Yeah.
money, as opposed to taking that 176 and using it to mitigate the debt service.
And taking it away from departments.
Right.
Right.
Well, yeah, departments in the sense that, you know, they're going to try and make it one-time money.
Right.
They, they took about four or 500,000, I think, and, at this point, and are contemplating putting that into operating budgets.
Mm-hmm.
But the rest of it is going for one-time.
One-time.
I mean, I think our departments are hurting, hurting for money this year anyway, so the one-time money is going to alleviate
Some of it, yeah.
Some of it.
Yeah.
And I would hate to take that away from them.
Yeah, I mean, it's alleviating one-time expenses rather than operating expenses.
Yes.
But, yeah, there's, there's pros and cons to both approaches.
There is, absolutely. I mean, if you think about it, you know, we, we've got the Henrys issue, we've got a, we've got a bunch of issues that, you know, one-time things that, you know, even from, from our own selfish standpoint, that, you know, that we've been lobbying for, that there is really no money to fund, or if we're going to fund them, it's at the, you know, it's going to come out of some other one-time project. So that would be another reason, too.
So we would vote, I guess, at the next meeting, and we'd just give the warrant committee what our consensus is tonight.
Yeah.
Good. Move on to the budget?
So in addition, at last night's warrant committee meeting, you were asked to rank your one-time departments under your jurisdiction, the requests. So this is a spreadsheet of your departmental one-time money requests. Currently, this talk on the warrant committee, on the stabilization funds for the stabilization, 200,000, putting in the stabilization and gap
Well, first of all, Anne Marie, how much money do we have to play with here?
Approximately, your requests amount to 1,600,000.
A million eight dollars?
What was the number was, Katie, that of?
1,277,751, available for one-time funds.
Right, yeah, exactly. And, and, you know, the schools have requested in for about a half a million of that, and, you know, there's, there's a bunch of
You had some
At that 1.2, there's, there's a lot of people with their
Right, there's independent boards, like the cemetery, the library, the park department.
Assessors.
Assessors.
So the warrant committee just really asked us to read?
All of the requests that, for departments that come out of the board.
Ah, control, right.
Your priority, you know, one, two, three. And so what I did was broke it down by your departments, but it showed you, you had requested in the selectmen's budget a $50,000 IT study, strategic study, that would really be for the town and for the schools. You had requested roadway improvement shortfall of 150,000, the DPW feasibility study of 35,000, the Henrys demolition of 250,000, consolidated facilities and the council on aging. The council on aging had requested 40,000 for HVAC repairs, but in talking with the consolidated, consolidated facilities director, he felt that that was, that number was a little high, and he, he felt that he really needed to do an assessment of the building to determine what kind of work it needed. Your consolidated facilities department requested 85,500, and it breaks down that, 51,500 of those projects would be for the schools, 34,000 would be for the town. DPW is looking for 61,000, fire, 17,620, and IT, 19,500. And again, the department heads, you look over, there's a column that says department head priority, they ranked their requests in this column over here.
Right.
And then there's a column for you, the board, to decide how you want to rank your, your one-time projects.
Should we start with the two stabilization funds?
There was a one and two on my list, so.
Okay, so there, so right now, the warrant committee's proposal is to, is $200,000 for the stabilization fund and 100,000, actually, not for the capital stabilization, for the, for the OPEB, the Gatsby 45
Right.
stabilization fund.
I'm, I'm okay with not putting the money in the cap, you know, it, it seems kind of stupid to put money into capital stabilization and then
When you're taking it out.
Hold it all back up. Yeah, so, so I'm okay with that.
They initially had slightly higher amounts than this.
Yes.
And
I would prefer to see the higher amounts
Tom, the capital stabilization isn't here, right?
No, capital stabilization is not there, it's been taken off the, the table.
So you want to make those one and two?
That would be my recommendation, and, I mean, the, the only question is, is whether you, whether you increase it to the amount requested, which was 282 and 141.
Yeah, I don't know that that was actually ever really requested, that was really the warrant committee's
That's the warrant committee's formula.
Formula.
Yeah.
I think their question was last night was, would there even be a little more room to free up, to not, you say not, to put in less than 200,000 into stabilization?
And I think that's a bad idea. I mean, we, we just got a AAA bond rating. We worked hard to get it, and, and part of what is getting you there, not all of what is getting you there, but certainly part of what is getting you there is, is, is our commitment to building reserves.
Right.
And, and having a AAA rating, as we've talked about in some smaller groups, and with the warrant committee, has an impact on the operating budget because it, it really does require us to keep building reserves as we've been doing the last few years. Milton's history, if you go back 10 or 15 years, is not to put amounts this significant into reserves. We've usually tried to, for instance, the landfill escrow account, when, when that was closed and we had a couple hundred thousand dollars left, I was on the warrant committee at that time, we put that into the, into the, the regular stabilization fund, not
And, and we've been really, really, really lucky.
Yes.
Every time we've gone out, every time we really needed an override and gone out, the voters have been really good, and they've given us one. Someone of those, these days, that's not going to happen.
But do, do we, are we obligated to put money in the stabilization?
Well, it has, but they're more in capital projects, you know, and, you know, way back when we lost an, an operating one, I think, but most have been, had been schools, library, those, those debt, debt override.
Escrow?
We have lost operating, but it, it hasn't been recently.
Yeah.
But are we obligated to put money into stabilization?
No, not obligated to put anything into any stabilization.
And in fact, I think we need to revisit our policies, because, and that's one thing we talked about a few months ago, we need to revisit those, and even standard employees, I think
Actually, this isn't even a policy right now.
Mentioned, it's not, yeah. Standard employees mentioned they'd like to see a policy that addresses this. This has really just been a practice in recent years. It's a good practice to continue building up our reserves for all the reasons that you just stated, but people should just be aware, having a AAA bond rating is necessitating
Building reserves.
Building the reserves up, which we've been doing recently, which is a good thing to do, but it's not what we had historically been doing. That's why, you know, for someone watching, some of these numbers for the, for the stabilization funds are higher than what we've, what we had historically been doing.
The closer I get to say H65, the more I realize how important it is to build reserves, so.
Right.
All right, so let's go through this list here and
So I think we should, I would be comfortable with the 200 and the 100, and not, not, not increasing it to what the warrant committee initially had, but not reducing it also.
So one and two?
Yes. Then my, my three is roadway.
And I would, I would agree with you.
And town meeting is going to be expecting something.
Well, Larry, but let's talk about that. What does 150,000 buy us for roadway? I would not put that as one of my top ones because I don't think it buys us a lot. I know, I, Tom, you're very big on infrastructure, I, I agree with you that we need a lot of infrastructure improvement. There's a lot of roads that are in bad condition that need to be done. I don't know what 150 buys us, and is that the best use of one-time money, or are we better off looking at a bigger plan for roads at a future date?
We are, we are better off looking for a bigger plan because the, the shortfall is 1.3 million dollars. We get about 700,000 in Chapter 9 money. We need approximately 2 million to, just to maintain pavement management so we don't lose ground every year. There's no way that's coming out of the operating budget every year. There's no way that that's going to get bonded every year. So, yeah, we need a plan, unless money falls from the sky or the, you know, Chapter 90 gets huge all of a sudden, which is unlikely. We need a plan to come up with 1.3 million dollars a year or something close to it.
Yeah, I just, I, again, I don't, if someone can tell us, will 150, you know, pave a particular street, or does DPW have a certain
Well, this would go to
Project that they
Patching roads, I mean, we have a lot of potholes after the winter, and this, it's, it's a Band-Aid, really.
Yeah. And we're trying to get some money also, some, some bonded money. I don't know what this whole thing has done to that, because we've got to revisit our, FY15 capital plan also. But we did have 350,000 also in the capital plan, so it would have made it, you know, 500,000 in total, which would have been reasonable, combined with 700,000 in Chapter 90 money.
Yeah. I would not put roadway as, as high, as, as high as both of you on this. Not that we don't need it, we do need it.
Katie, it's in my top six, that's it. I mean, it's not, it might not be number three, but it's, it's definitely in my top six.
Yeah, it's not a priority for me, 150, because I don't think that it, that it will actually buy us very much. And I think there's probably a better use for some of the, the later things on the list.
I had
You do have a question.
DPW feasibility study.
I had, that's up there, but before that, I had the IT study. And the only reason I did that is, feasibility study, I, I think we should have it, but the feasibility study is
You
That's not going to happen without a debt exclusion. I mean, it's 20 million dollars, you know, that's the number we've been throwing around. Even if it's less, I mean, even if it's 10 million dollars, we don't have that, so. So, you know, that, that will be a debt exclusion, an override, a vote. If that gets pushed off a year, you know, it's probably not the worst thing in the world, although I would like to see it done.
Yeah, I agree, that's not one of my top priorities for, for the current year. I mean, we're only, we're only talking about what are our priorities for 15. Some of these items, as you said, might fall into 16.
I will call your attention to the fire department, sickly buyback on the second page for the 14,120. That is
Yeah.
That's, that's a contractual obligation, so
Yeah, so I think you have to put that up there.
That is a priority.
Yeah.
Now, the IT study, Tom, you know, that's our request, but it's also the school request.
Yes.
So I do think that one is a priority.
Yeah, I had the number four on my list.
Now, the council, the COA HVAC repairs, how desperate is that?
They're pretty desperate over there. Although
Is it new system that they need, or just repairs?
Repairs.
Okay.
And the
But you think we can do it for 20, not 40?
I think so.
Yeah.
I think we could appropriate 20.
Okay.
And didn't we say that's falling under the consolidated facilities request?
Right, yeah.
Well, it wasn't within his 85,000 request. The council on aging director had made this request to the warrant committee, this 40,000 request, but the consolidated facilities director did not see a need for the 40,000 for that.
So his estimate is 20 for that?
Yes.
So I think we should put that one in as, in as a priority at the 20,000 figure.
Yeah, yeah.
So you want that at your three? That number three?
It's my number three, but I, I think Tom and Katie had IT as number three.
Yeah, I mean, I don't care whether IT goes to four, I, I had it as four because I had roadways as three, but I can't
Do we have to list them in order? I thought we could just give them a few items and say these are our top priorities rather than
These are our top priority. Yeah, maybe that's the best one, because we're never going to agree on the exact numbers.
All right.
So I, we're in agreement that stabilization fund and Gatsby 45 are, we're in agreement that the IT is, we're in agreement that HVAC repairs is, we're in agreement
20,000.
Yeah, for 20. Sickly buyback is
Yes, yeah.
Let's talk about the 250 request for the Henrys demolition. That is a priority. We, we told the warrant committee last night that it's a priority, there might be, depending on how they might choose to recommend some of this one-time funding, it may be that part of it would need to be an RFT request, there, there might be some other ways of
Getting it. Getting at it.
-funding, getting at it through the reserve fund or other options, but I think that should be something that is a priority.
For the demolition?
The demolition cost.
Yeah, the fear is if we do have to demolish and the money's not there, it's going to, we're going to need it quickly, and-
All right. I have to be honest here, I can't support this because I don't see the demolition happening. I would rather sell the building to somebody and let them demolish it, because, you know, we're into the Henrys building for 170,000, plus, 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 which is about 200, plus another 250 to take it down is 450.
I think we have this on for our agenda for executive session, but I think just for the, so really, the only thing that we've submitted to the warrant committee is a request for demolition funds, and, you know, I would view that as a priority, and it may be that as the spring goes on, we can give the warrant committee some updates on where we're at, but I would view that one as a priority, more so than the roads at this point.
I guess, and this is only talking practical, not, I too think we should, at least, because again, we just don't know where this is going, and, you know, even though maybe, maybe a preference would be to sell the building and, you know, let somebody else take it down, and that would be nice, but we may not have that luxury, and we just don't know.
We don't, but I don't think we need to get into a lengthy discussion, and I just, we just-
We can talk about it a little bit, Katie, we can talk about it a little bit.
Well, it's on our executive session agenda tonight.
That's fine, but we can talk about it here, too, a little bit, because it's on this, it's on, it's on this sheet, so we can talk about it. My recommendation would be to maybe put 100,000 aside for potential legal fees, you know, there's no man's land we have to talk about there.
We haven't requested anything for legal fees, the request that's before the committee is for, is for demolition. Are we agree that the DPW feasibility study for 35 is not on the top priorities?
I would say yes, that's the-
Lower priority?
Lower priority.
Should we give the warrant committee just a few high priorities and a few low priorities, rather than doing the numbers?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I guess for consolidated facilities-
These other ones are so small, they're hard to-
Well, I think we could put them into consolidated facilities, town and schools.
Yeah, it's 85, do we want to go through them one by one, or do we want to just say either as a group they're higher, or as a group they're low?
I mean, unless they're, unless they're health and safety issues, from my standpoint, they're low.
A new fire alarm panel.
But if there's any health and safety issues there, I would say that-
Well, it's hard, yeah, and it's hard to know, for instance, Bill Ritchie is listed as number one installing safety straps on basketball arms at the high school, that's only 5,700.
Right, and it's, they're tiny expenditures, I know.
Fire alarm panel, that's probably in the category of safety.
What's wrong with the existing fire alarm panel, you know, John? No?
Safety straps, so if somebody dunks a basketball, they don't crash it down, is that what it is?
I don't know. Did you get any information from him, Emory, on these, no?
I would guess that-
Why don't you decide on an amount and then let him decide what are the safety-
Yeah, maybe that's not a bad idea.
Health and safety issues and high priorities?
Yeah, maybe to say-
Like the fire alarm panel, maybe?
Maybe to say the 20 grand of this is priority and the balance is not, that at least gives, throws something at it to, how much of-
Yeah, you're looking at the top four then, I guess.
Yeah, yeah. Step ladder to dunk a basketball.
So we have 85,000 here between the school and the town, we just want to improve half of it. Let them split it?
Yeah, at least give them enough to address the most important ones, and let, yeah, and I agree with Kate, let Bill Ritchie decide what the most important ones are.
Yeah, it's one option. So you're recommending 20,000 for that?
Yeah, 20 or so.
The next page, DPW asking for 61,000.
The traffic signs, I still say suck it up and put it in the operating budget.
As a separate line item?
As a separate line item.
I think everybody learned something last night there.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, at some point, we might want to revisit, you know, revisit that revolving fund.
Yeah, I mean, you know, certainly throwing it here as one-time money is kind of stupid, I think.
Okay, so he's also looking-
Like 200 trees?
I don't think, I don't think those are high priority, we're looking to do grants on those.
Drain analysis, jet cleaning.
I would think that you might want to, I would think you might want to make your sidewalk repairs.
Sidewalk repairs, that is a public safety issue, right?
Because that's public, yes.
Yeah, I would say yes.
And the signs are a safety issue.
The signs get made one way or the other.
You want to put that in the operating budget?
Yeah.
All right, you want to make sidewalk repairs?
Sidewalk repairs are, I would agree that those are important.
And he listed that as number two as well. The jet cleaning, the drain jet cleaning and the, well, actually, the drainage analysis based on last night's, last night's discussion is important to a particular neighborhood.
But I did talk to the DPW director today on that, and they actually did the initial plans for the drain analysis for that area in-house in the engineering department, so that wasn't truly a high priority.
He doesn't, he doesn't need this anymore?
That's why it moved down to four, yeah.
Okay. The drain jet cleaning discussion last night at the warrant committee, it was an important item, I don't know if it would be our top priority, though. Fire department sickly buyback is contractual, so we need that one.
Got it?
Yes.
That's 14,120.
Right. You know about this radio, fire department radio?
It's just new equipment, new radios, because number one was the sickly buyback.
Okay, so yeah, I think you do the one, I think the 10 grand for replacing XP workstations is reasonably important.
Yeah, I think that one is important.
That includes all these laptops we're using.
I think that's good, yeah.
Not going to be supported in about a month or two, so.
Yeah, and the other, the two training ones-
Training, I think I would hold off on the two trainings because the town school consolidated facilities committee, we're, we are looking at some other software, so if in the event we just change to another software, we wouldn't want to need that 7 or 2,500 for training.
Did we say anything about the fire department radio, that's a $3,500 item?
That's replacing all the radios. Yeah, those-
Did he say that was a priority?
It's not, he said it was the number two. That would not replace all of his radios.
You want to make that a priority, radios?
Um, I'm not inclined to, but-
All right, can we go over these again, just one last time?
Okay, priorities, stabilization for my Gatsby 45.
Yeah.
IT consultant study.
Council on Aging?
Council on Aging, 20.
20,000.
I still have the roadway as my priority, I don't know if we have consensus on that, though.
No, I'd put Henry's demolition above that, we can tell them if we don't have a consensus, and let them know what it is.
Okay.
And then for the consolidated facilities, we said 20,000?
Yes, 20,000 for health and safety.
He can pick it.
DPW, 10,000 for the sidewalk repair, fire department, 14,120 for the sickly buyback, and the IT, 10,000 for the replacement workstations.
Yeah, so, okay, so I've got, yeah, I've got the stabilization for my Gatsby 45, I put Henry's 100, the Chapter 90 shortfall, the IT study, 20K for HVAC repairs, 20K for consolidated facilities, and then the sickly buyback, the-
Sidewalk repairs?
Sidewalk repair and the PC replacements.
Yeah. Go back, Kate?
That's probably still more money than what they have to go out with.
Yeah, I think it probably is, but it gives them a sense of the priorities, yeah.
Are you in agreement with 100,000?
Well, you're saying you recommend 100 for Henry's demolition because you'd probably propose to get the rest from the reserve fund?
Yeah.
Assuming we have reserve fund money for it.
Right.
And the roadway improvements?
Roadway.
Are you on that?
I would support that as well, yeah.
For me, that's a lower priority.
Okay.
Second, low-profile tires on my car, and I'm tired of my teeth rattling every time I drive over a pothole.
I will get this to the warrant committee in the morning.
Have you driven down Central Avenue recently?
Yeah, I know, it's bad.
Well, but that's, that'll be addressed in the coming year, they've already started the work on that last summer and fall.
Okay, number 16, the town administrator's report?
I don't have anything.
And same with the chairman's report, I'm not going to report this week, I'll leave it till next week, so.
Okay.
At this point, I'll make a motion to enter executive session to consider the purchase, exchange lease, our value of real property, 211 Center Street and 0 Central Avenue, and to consider litigation, strategy, sewer amnesty program, believing that having these discussions in open session would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body, and to return to open session to adjourn.
Second.
Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
I mean, yes, we're in the executive session.